Thirty, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Fargo Board of Education. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda? Jim?
I move adoption of the agenda with the addition of the HR addendum that was located at our work location.
Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed?
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy. We have Tracy on the phone. Most, uh, the agenda is approved and we will move forward onto the recognition of the audience portion of the agenda. And three individuals have signed up to speak with us this evening. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and home school district for the record. Speakers must refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee or student by name. Vulgar or profane language will not be tolerated. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or to debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of four minutes. Upon conclusion of the allotted time, a chime will sound and the speaker is, will be asked to conclude. If necessary, a final chime will sound fifteen seconds later, signifying the end of the speaker's time at the podium. And our first speaker this evening is Brandon Krieger.
Good afternoon, or good evening, sorry. So, I come here as a parent and a teacher in the district. I work in South Fargo, um, the middle schools on there. It's kind of, it has been about five months since I first came to you prior to the school year, seeing that I trusted the school board in their efforts and decision-making to keep the schools functioning and doing what is best, creating lifelong connections and educating students. Alas, I come here today to discuss the realities of the situation. Teachers and staff are struggling. No matter what internally is being stated, my school can face twenty periods uncovered each day. They can reach up to forty periods of uncovered staff each day. That concerns me as a parent of a middle schooler and a teacher. Front office staffs at, at school start sending out emails at six forty-five AM up three to four times before school starts, looking and hoping for teachers to cover the openings. Ask, ask a teacher, ask your principals, um, how are they keeping these schools open and how they're filling those spots? On the back of teachers and administrators giving up prep periods, training, and their responsibilities with their positions and with staff. Let's not forget about the extra work front office staff, janitors, cafeteria workers, and paraeducators are doing to help keep the schools afloat. Every able-bodied has been at this since November. Teachers have, teachers volunteer to sub, it's true, but it's out of duty, not want. Teachers know they have to step up. Teachers volunteer to, or teachers have to, have to, because that's what teachers do. Teachers do it for other teachers, teachers do it for the students, and teachers do it because teachers care. Teachers are, their schools are families. Teachers are being able, are being pulled from necessary, teachers are being pulled from necessary training to, to prepare them to learn new school district mandatory EBR grade, grading because subs are not possible in-house or district approved, or district provided. Principals are doing heroic acts of subbing to keep everything pulled together amongst their long list of items. Front staff and pairs daily are faced with an overwhelming load of behaviors that have never been seen before. This pandemic, this culture, this public division and divisiveness has pushed educators to their brink. Teachers ne- ne- no, sorry, excuse me, teachers know what is set outside the schools and is draining. As a result, teachers are starting to suffer from burnout and not volunteering as much. I've come here with a heightened sense of concern that I would like the public and the school board to take seriously. I know ideas have been produced to alleviate the situations, but I'm worried that time is not on our side. As a teacher myself, for our students, for their staff, something needs to happen. Things cannot persist as they are. Lastly, I ask that every one of you find time to visit all our schools, find time to spend it with staff, and see what they're going through, see the struggles they face on the front lines. Please take this seriously. Teachers cannot only ma- teachers can only mask the excuse for, issues for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Klein?
Hi, thanks so much for hearing from the public tonight. Really appreciate it and appreciate all your good work. My name is Lori Klein, I'm from North Fargo. My husband teaches for Fargo Public Schools and I'm a graduate student at NDSU. I'm experiencing a tremendous amount of cognitive dis- dissidence right now because this room would never happen at NDSU, ever. Not now, I mean, not now anyway. We hope it will within a month or so. But no one at NDSU is walking around without, not in the music department, they're not walking around without a mask on, not in the classroom, not in the meeting. All my professors, when we came back for second semester, were wearing better quality masks and their cloth masks over that. Kids are still getting, still getting COVID, um, but we're, we're controlling spread up there. So it's, it's very odd to be in a room like this. I know I live in Fargo and I know what it's like, but I don't, I just don't go into rooms like this. We're still having trouble understanding exactly why you followed through with the decision made months ago when the situation has so clearly changed so drastically. Fargo-Cass Public Health, North Dakota Department of Health, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics have not changed their recommendations for indoor, uh, public spaces and COVID mitigation. Even Fargo-Cass Public Health didn't change their recommendations for indoor public spaces. They didn't change it. What they said was, schools requiring masks in schools does not have a significant impact on spread in the community. That's a hundred percent true here, no doubt about it, because it's spreading so crazy. But that's what they said. They didn't say you shouldn't require masks in school. They just said it's not going to make a significant difference in the community. The school's primary concern though really ought to be what's happening in the school building, not the rest of the community. This, when school boards and teachers and administrators do not look to career subject matter experts and follow their recommendations on something like this and their requests for local help for the work they do, you're, you're become, you're part of the problem, you're not part of the solution. And you're teaching kids that they can just do whatever they want regardless of how it impacts the community. It shows a tremendous amount of disrespect for our healthcare professionals who have been pleading for help for months. It, I, it's, it's mind-boggling. School mitigation may not make much of a difference in the community at large, but it makes a huge difference for families who have been trying to avoid or delay infection in their own families. We all know we're going to get COVID at some point, there's no question about that. But, um, we would like a chance to delay it, to delay it as long as we can. We would like a chance to get our kids under five vaccinated. We would like to have access to treatment if it's needed and it's not right now, that's clear, it's not. And we would like to have access to a hospital if we need it, and we may not have that right now. Please seriously consider public health recommendations and ongoing pleas for help from our local healthcare professionals for indoor public spaces. Universal masking, distancing as you can, limiting group sizes, and observing the best practices for schools during periods of super-high transmission like this, including contact tracing, quarantine and isolation. It's, it's very clear walking into this room that that is very unlikely. So we'd appreciate it if you'd just stop adding to the misinformation about what, what public health guidance actually is, because it has not changed for indoor public spaces. The principle that schools are the safest place for our kids to be during the pandemic surges, that no longer applies for Fargo Public Schools. Education and health officials who say this are assuming that you are providing at least basic mitigation, and we're not doing that. So we'd appreciate it very much if you would explain to us what the plan is from here on out, what your goals are, and why you've made this decision and do it as clearly as you possibly can. What are the limits for staff and student illness and absentees? Are there any limits to that? What will happen then if we hit that limit? Are you going to close buildings? Are you going to switch to distance learning? Are you going to find some kind of creative solution where we can have a circuit breaker kind of approach? We're in four days, we're out for three days, we're in anything. We just appreciate hearing from you. Thanks so much for doing the best with what you have, appreciate it.
Thank you. Julie Anderson?
Hello, my name is Julie Anderson and I am a parent of students in fifth and eighth grades, and I have also been a teacher in Fargo Public Schools for twenty-one years. I just have a few minutes to speak to you, but from my perspective, what I have to say is very important. You probably aren't hearing that much from teachers, because to be honest with you, teachers are scared to come in front of the board to talk about what's happening at school. So I'm primarily going to talk about the, my perspective as a parent, but if I could have your attention for just a few minutes, I would really appreciate that. COVID cases are at an all-time high in Cass County. In fact, the number of cases are double what the cases were in the fall of 2020. This surge in cases have occurred very quickly, primarily within the last couple of weeks. Also during this time, Fargo Public Schools has shifted from mask required to mask highly recommended, and other changes has been made as well. With current mitigation, students are encouraged to wash their hands, and if parents of students decide to test their child, they have to stay home for five days after their symptoms begin. However, if you don't require masks, you can still have other safeguards in place. Limit crowd size such as no large assemblies. Send sick kids home. Require kids with two symptoms to quarantine or have a negative test. When a student comes back after five days, require a mask as recommended by CDC guidelines. You could develop thresholds for masking and closing classrooms. For instance, if there are two more cases in a classroom within ten days, mask could be required for a certain length of time. Further transmission in the classroom could call for the classroom to close and to go to distance learning for a period of time. Require quarantine for household positives. As it stands now, if one sibling has COVID, the other siblings can come to school even if they are unvaccinated. In fact, that happened to me today. I knew that the sister was positive and the siblings came to me. And I knew it was very likely they had COVID. And after school, I realized that that had, did actually happen. Another concern is lack of subs. Teachers are frequently covering for each other and sometimes kids are doubled up in classes. That's the opposite of social distancing. That's the opposite of what we should be doing. Teachers in middle and high school are also giving up their planning time, you've already heard about that tonight. Ask a teacher you know how it's going, or better yet, visit a school near the start of the school day and observe those that are working to cover classrooms. My son's classroom teacher had COVID. She was vaccinated but, uh, still had symptoms and was not able to return within five days. That week, three other positive cases were identified in the classroom. His classroom was not moved to distance learning, no testing was required. Subs were not available many of the days, so they combined the classrooms. Now, I doubt that they could say that it spread from one class to the other, but it's very possible. I, as a teacher, took my healthy child out of school and let him stay home to play video games to prevent infection. As a teacher and parent, that is something I thought I would never do. I want to be clear that I don't blame the teachers and staff. I know they are given an impossible set of circumstances and constraints. You can do something about that. You can decide to implement additional mitigation strategies. The principals at the school can't. I, as a teacher, cannot do that. I, as a parent, can only do so much, but all of you could do something to change that and help protect our kids and help protect the employees that have given so much of their life to work for the school system and so much of their time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the report section of the agenda. The first item is a report on equitable resources and planning monitoring from our human resources, uh, team. And there is a memo, it's memo seventy-three that accompanies this. Doug, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity for presenting this. So we will dive right into it, and I think we have this reported all of our workstations, but if we look at the first page, and I'll just kind of go over the highlights of, of this since we all have this in front of us. We serve about two thousand one hundred and sixty-two regular, um, and part-time employees. So that's not including substitutes and other types of, um, temporary employees. And then this year, we issued three thousand six hundred and thirty-three W-twos. So quite a remarkable, uh, task as we all get into a room and stuff envelopes for about two days straight, so. Um, the human resources team, really all of the things you see in this report, um, are accomplished by that team, and I couldn't be prouder of what that team does every year. As you see in the report, it's been a busy year. We have been approved and have actually posted, we have a one-point-oh FTE, um, vacant payroll technician. So as we look to streamline our payroll practices, provide even more oversight, um, and we process, it's about a hundred and twelve to a hundred and thirteen million dollars in payroll every year. Um, we're expanding that team so we can keep up operationally as we expand staff through Esser dollars and other things throughout the district. Employee statistics, you'll see there, broken down, January twenty-twenty-two. Administrators, seventy, teachers, about eleven-hundred-and-eight. And then again, that gets us about our twenty-one-hundred-and-sixty-two number for total permanent and regular staff. Employee statistics information, as it states there, that does include regularly scheduled employees. However, our Esser or elementary and secondary, uh, emergency relief funds, and those are funded, those are positions are funded on a yearly basis based on those availability of funds and the need for the position, those were also included in those numbers. So those are not separate from our total hiring numbers listed there. And then kind of a brief like explanation of what is in each of those numbers. Administrators or principals, assistant principals, cabinet and directors, teachers, regular and special education teachers, counselors, job categories, and the other salaried, um, numbers which we, um, other salaried, we refer to as professional support staff. You'll find area service coordinators, student wellness, family facilitators, positive behavior interventionists. And then our educational support, there you'll find our paraeducators, uh, positive behavior technicians, um, occupational therapists, business office staff, human resources staff. And then maintenance custodians, um, and lead custodians, and then our nutrition, our cooks, cooks assistants and dishwashers. The next, uh, section, we'll go over recruitment and hiring process. And if we look at that, really just kind of an outline of efforts that we've done over the last year and really in previous years too, and a culmination of those things. We've reached out to educational institutions, uh, colleges and universities, not only to recruit substitutes, but any regular staff. We try to recruit and retain all of the great student teachers that we get into our buildings. Other efforts do include attendance at job fairs such as the Concordia Job Fair. I'm hoping that one will actually be in person that was online last year due to COVID. And we are signed up for the Minot State Job Fair as it states there. We really look to those hard-to-recruit positions like our deaf and hard-of-hearing teachers, speech-language pathologists. Those are very hard to recruit, and that's what the Minot Job Fair specializes in, is graduating those students. So we like to have a presence there. And then, um, if we look at the next page, we've got a breakdown of the Esser dollars that we have invested in staff. So you'll see administrators, about two hundred and fifty thousand. Teachers, about four-point-four million dollars, and then support staff, about one-point-three million dollars. So that's what we've invested thus far into the Esser-funded positions. And then the hiring statistics, you'll see there, um, those are from July one of, uh, to January one. And you'll see a majority of our investment in the hiring, and that's a total of four hundred and ninety-seven. Our teachers and educational support, so those frontline folks that are working directly with our students. Our Esser Fund hiring, external hires, and our internal transfers, those are not in addition to the hiring numbers you see, um, up on top there. Those are included in there, but I just wanted to break down what we actually did with our Esser Fund. Again, you can see forty-five, uh, teachers, external and mostly into educational support, where we recruited outside of Fargo Public Schools to get those staff. And then our internal transfers, you'll see twenty teachers. A lot of those are academic interventionists or, um, I think what we commonly refer to as gap coaches in our elementary schools. And then again, educational support is really where the majority of our investment went. And then if we flip over the page again, our hiring statistics information, that'll give a little bit of a breakdown of what types of positions that we did recruit, whether it be with Esser dollars or general fund. And you'll see a majority, excuse me, of those positions were hired due to a resignation or retirement. For administrators, we have two deans of students, they help with our North Dakota Center for Distance Education. For teachers, um, those Esser dollars, as I said before, academic interventionists. We have instructional coast, uh, coaches, gifted and talent teachers, and then others listed there as well. And then other salaried and educational, um, support, you'll see the variety of positions there. Everything from EL paraeducator tutors, positive behavior technicians, health aides, licensed nurses to help us do testing at some of our buildings. And then maintenance, um, that has expanded a little bit due to the growing needs of the district. Um, we did add a lead warehouse clerk into that group. And then we finish off with nutrition, um, who is really trying to, um, as they have a unique, just as any other department, hiring needs and somewhat of an inability to get the people they need in there. We're really working with them, what does a flexible schedule look like? And if you'll see there of note, we did conduct a job fair specific to, um, really maintenance and operations and nutrition last summer. That was at Carl Ben Ielson. Basically, you could walk in, get an interview, give us your resume, and have a job offer right then and there. We did compete with NDSU that day, they had a job fair, but it was relatively successful and definitely a model we want to continue with going forth. And then new employee orientation survey data, that is fairly new to this report that I've, um, done in the past, but as you'll see, this is data during our summer of twenty-twenty-one orientations from our permanent and regular support staff, teachers, and then we do offer for substitutes. We do an orientation and go over things, which I think is fairly rare around in this area, where that's the feedback they've given us, where they really appreciate coming in because they're such a critical part of our staff. But you'll see here, the first one, it's called the HR IT New Hire Orientation Survey for Teachers. That's where HR and IT get together and we go through those things like benefits, policies, employee portal, print center, um, all of those things, and take them through a full day of that. And then we ask them, how did we do during that? And you'll see here, most of the results are within that good or excellent, where they're giving us good feedback on how that day is structured. Then if you flip the page again, you'll see the, um, new orientation survey, but this time it's a teaching and learning department hosting that. So facilitators in that department, they'll go through vision, uh, positive behavior management, teacher induction and mentor program, and you'll see we're ranked pretty good or excellent in those types of categories too, based on our survey results. We also do the same for support staff. It's a little bit more abbreviated, but we go through benefits, policies, absence management, how you get around our portal. Again, a majority are good and excellent results and how we structure and deliver on that day. And then finally, the piece of the substitutes. Again, that's policy, emergency management, substitute handbooks, uh, public website, how we manage substitutes, really how our goal and vision is of assigning them throughout the district. Overall, we get very good results in how we structure that day. And I think there's a good appreciation for, um, from them to, to give them that time to come in and meet with us. And if we continue on with resignations and retirements, now these are ones July first through, um, twenty-twenty-one through January where we have received notice. It may not mean that they retired right now, but we have received a proper notice. So we have a comparison here from this time last year, the same type of timeframe to this time this year. We do have a hundred and forty-one resignations, and you'll see that's about double what we had last year, um, with most of those accounting from teachers and educational support as compared to the same time last year. And then, um, resignations and retirement information. This is something new that the Human Resources Office worked on last year where we want to get that survey data. We did survey folks that retired and resigned, um, in the past, but we really looked at, how do we redo that? How do we make it easier for people to respond, because we don't always get a good response rate? As you'll see in the report, we did, um, for this year, have about a thirty to forty percent response rate. That's actually pretty remarkable when you're considering that people actually want to give that feedback. Sometimes it can be a zero response rate, um, as people, they just want to leave, not give any feedback. So, but how we broke that down, and this is for the calendar year. You'll see on that page, it's by gender, by employee age, you'll see a majority, it's a twenty-five to fifty-nine-year-old, was the most of our resignations and retirements, and of course, that's a very big age gap, so that makes sense. We have it broken down by ethnicity and then education. So you'll see a majority of those resigned or retired either have a bachelor's or a master's degree. And then if you flip over again, we break it down by employee role and you can see there all the percentages. But again, the majority are teachers and our paraeducators together really make up the majority of what our total resignations and retirements are for this last calendar year. And then we really get into the meat and potatoes, the organizational climate and the factors affecting departure. So why did you leave? And overall, you can see with organizational climate, the blues indicate very satisfied, to somewhat satisfied with the reds, not satisfied at all. And we can see over what we measure from work experience, building communication, staff equity, supervisor approachability, most of those are either mostly satisfied or very satisfied. Now, if you look at factors affecting departure, um, strong influence to leave, slight influence to leave, those are all in like that red or pink color. So we can kind of see some trends where there might be some concerns on workload. Salary, we can see things, personal life, kind of that work-life balance, where it's not alarmingly concerning where it ranked high, but those would be the highest four factors affecting departure. Otherwise, we see most of those, they said it's no effect. And I see that in the resignation notices, it's, my spouse is leaving the area, I need to move. It really has nothing to do with any of, of this. It's something beyond their control. And then, some of the things about employee wellness, um, that I wanted to add to the report, and you'll see that we've been working really the last three years and we partner with the village. This year, we're offering resiliency, stress reduction and work-life blend. And I really work with them to say, what, what's kind of the prevailing trainings going on out there that you're working with businesses, what's going on out there? And then I work with principals and other staff and feedback, and I get, what is it as far as employee wellness opportunities that we'd like to see? And these are purely voluntary, and they run through the months of December, January and February. You can join on, get credit for them, or you don't have to at all. But we continue to contract with the village, set aside some credits for that so that we can continue to offer those wellness sessions, they're more important than ever right now. And then something that we are starting to work on is that bell seal for workplace mental health. And Jen's our MTSS coordinator, that's something she approached me on. And we've just kind of started to dive into it where we have to ask a series of questions, and then we can basically get the seal of approval. This is probably something that would go on to my operational plan for next year, but there are a variety of things that you set up in your workplace, um, a mental health survey being one of them. And then you're really tagged as an employer of choice for recruitment and retention for this bell seal, for workplace mental health, but there's a lot of things we'd have to set up. But nonetheless, we're exploring that right now and we're going to submit an application for it. We'll have to see really where that goes, I think, in the future, but we've just started that work. And then finally, we're going to close out some of our, or all of our operational and strategic plan items within the area of human resources. Just a couple to highlight, we had a successful transition to Health Partners Medical Insurance Plan. We had about a two- or three-month communication campaign. I think to the point where people set up rules to delete those emails that came to them automatically, they got so sick of them, but it went probably smoother than we would have thought, so, and we are with Health Partners right now. We are implementing new finance, human resources and payroll information system software. I'm sure Jackie would agree with me, that's no small task, but that work is going to get really, really busy now. Meetings with Tyler Technologies, cleaning up data and all of that stuff. And then finally, I'd highlight, um, the district did, uh, contract with public sector personnel consultants, and we've asked them to do a salary study really specific to our professional support staff and administration, but that's excluding cabinet out of that. And that's really the beginning at looking at, what are our job descriptions look like when we're recruiting? Are they labeled correctly? What are our salary schedules looking like? The ranges that we have, are those proper? Are they comparable to other industries? So we've compared, um, ass, and they take this on, but they, um, survey other industries and things that, that we help them with and identify with to get all of that data for us, and we would expect a recommendation from them, and I continue to work with them probably sometime in March or April, where they will have some preliminary results for cabinet to review, to see what it is that we'd like to do. And then just to finish out, I usually put the noteworthy information, sixty-three percent of our teachers have master's degrees, and we did one hundred and fifty-three lane changes processed, um, to date. And then to close out, a little bit of information on substitutes, and you'll see that And then to close out, a little bit of information on substitutes, and you'll see that on average, 70 substitutes and 12 paraeducator subs are working each day. That can fluctuate a little bit, but that's about on average. If we look at our last two years of data in the report, it doesn't wildly fluctuate. We have about that working because of the total amount of folks and substitutes that we have available for us to work. So while those numbers don't fluctuate too much, of course, with more absences and illnesses, we retain about the same number of subs. It just gets harder to fill those absences. We do, as it shows here in, in the report, we do offer bonus incentives for both substitute teachers and new to this year, our substitute paraeducators, and those are based on every 12 days of work. And then, something that I think that we should be proud of, we continue to be able to use Esser dollars. We are approved to recruit up to 40 long-term subs, so those are the ones that will work every student contact day with us, all 175. They're going to be placed out in the teacher's salary schedule. They're going to get prorated leave, and they're going to get health insurance if they choose to opt in. Right now, we have recruited 32. We're still on the lookout for eight more, as it gets a little bit harder for us to find those folks in the community, but we, we are looking for eight more. And we plan on continuing with at least that plan throughout the next, throughout the 22, 23, and 23, 24 year. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Doug. Board members, have any questions? Robin?
Thank you for that report, Doug. You're doing such important work right now, and it's tough times. You know, I, I would, I just read this report this afternoon. I would really appreciate some numbers from 2019, pre-pandemic. To me, that is the true comparison of where we're at before and after. So if you could share that information later, that would be much appreciated.
Are you talking like hiring numbers, or sub numbers?
Whatever the grid was. Resignations and retirements in particular.
Sure, and I'll probably look to that year's report, and we can get that, so.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a problem.
Thank you. And then Doug, if you want to just share that out with the rest of the whole group, that would be great. There might be some other requests. Jim?
Yeah, kind of along the same vein. First of all, thank you very much, and thanks to your team. You know, this is a pretty comprehensive report, not only of what your department's done, but what we as a district are doing to address our HR concerns. So I really, really appreciate that. One thing that would be helpful to me, when I look at the hiring statistics July 1st through January 1st, 497 staff people have been hired, which seems like a huge number to me. And when I looked at the increase on number of people that have resigned being 70, that means 420 of these are probably normal, but I don't know that. So as you're digging back on data, if you could just pull like the last two years for that same timeframe, how many people we hired, if that's data that's easy to get at. If I'm talking about three hours of your life, then you tell me to, you know, pound sand, and we'll go on from there. But if it's easy to get, I, I'd just be curious, because, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of turnover. But that's typical, I suspect, for us as a district, when we've got 3,000-plus W2s being generated. And in the course of a year, I'm guessing you might have 800 hires, especially with all the part-time people that come and go.
Right, and our yearly hiring, you'll find out on the strategic plan dashboard out on the website, we'll compile that usually about September, because that's when we end up processing everything for the fiscal year. You'll find that comprehensive retirement, turnover rates, resignations, hiring, and that probably will make a little bit more sense than this snapshot in time. But yeah, I should be able to get that kind of snapshot picture over the last two years. I don't think it'll take me three hours, so.
Thanks.
David, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Doug. I had a very similar question. On the, on I believe the second or third page, where you have the employee statistics for January 2022, it, to me, it would be very helpful if you could include the statistics from the previous year, so we could see whether we've, how, how those numbers have changed.
Absolutely.
And then, I had one other question. On the page with hiring statistics, on the Esser Fund hirings, 45 teachers were hired using Esser Funds. Actually, I think a total of, between external and internal, 65. When do those Esser Funds run out?
I'm gonna maybe turn it over to Jackie on the right answer.
For all these positions that are in annual position, we've put them in Esser III, and so the funding will end on September 30th of 2024.
So then that will mean that these, the 65 teachers and the two administrators will not have to be non-renewed this coming spring, correct? Their, their contracts should, should reach through into the 2020, or 22, 23 year, correct?
Dr. Gandhi?
I'll tackle that one. So it just depends on each position. Every position that was hired, that's a result of the Esser Funding, whether it's an internal staff member that went into a position that's only going to be for the duration of Esser Funds, or someone that backfilled that position. It has been communicated with that individual upon both the application to the employment and to the job, that every position that is only a result of Esser will be subject to non-renewal on an annual basis. So that's going to be where we will do our maintenance of effort with our grant funding and see is a program of value after year one. Do we want to continue that? And if so, if so, then we'll continue on to the second or third year of Esser. Additionally, with that, we are as proactively as we can, looking at our annual attrition rate to see that when Esser Funding does run out, what are our opportunities, what will be potential opportunities for staff to have employment opportunities within the district, or if that's something that we need to look at, a non-renewal because of the lack of Esser Funds at that point in time. And because we've communicated that, then we have also actually begun that conversation with FEA of what that can look like. And additionally, I think we're also trying to find opportunities where we can make sure that those individuals have an opportunity for employment, if not here somewhere else as well. And I think that's one of the reasons that, that's a byproduct of one of the, the All-for-One Esser Program that we put together as well, to incentivize individuals to get credentialed in high-need areas, because we know that we consistently have vacancies in those areas, and if not us, other neighboring districts as well. So multi-tiered approach, but definitely something that we're taking a look at. The long and the short of it is that, on an annual basis, and even maybe even before then, every six months, we're taking a look at how our Esser Funds are being spent, and are we meeting the intended outcomes? It's part of the maintenance of effort that we have to submit for the grant, but just also part of just what we're doing to make sure that we're using those funds judiciously.
Thank you.
Go ahead, David.
If I may, just one quick last question. On the, the noteworthy information on the last page, Doug, where it has the percentage of teachers with master's degree and the lane changes, is that percentage with master's degrees staying consistent? Is it rising? I think it's about the highest in this state, isn't it?
It actually went, I'm trying to think of, I think my last report a year ago was, it was either 65 or 68%. So that did go down a little bit, but that could be the effects of retirements and resignations, and then hiring teachers in with a bachelor's degree. It'll fluctuate, but I haven't gotten data from any other districts, but we're typically the highest.
And, and the lane changes, is that about what it is typically?
That's about where it has been, yeah. Maybe a little bit more, but that's going to be pretty much where it's been at.
Thank you to you and your team for this.
Absolutely.
Jennifer?
Thank you. My question is for Dr. Gandhi, as a follow-up to some of the information that you just shared. And at a previous meeting some time ago, when we talked about Esser and hiring positions, there was mention of making sure that we can hire on a temporary basis within the teacher con, current teacher contract. Can you tell us a little bit, you're looking at me like you don't recall?
No, it's, it's not that. This is a conversation we've had since we've started hiring Esser Funds. It's not necessarily just a provision of the teacher contract. Those are outlining the salaries and benefits that the board has negotiated, but we're also looking at North Dakota Century Code, what our non-renewal rights are. We have a administrative policy on recall and layoffs that may give rights to certain individuals after a couple of years, based on certain conditions with the district as well. So it is a multi-tiered conversation. Within North Dakota Century Code, there are no short and long-term contracts. It's actually something that, as a GAC committee and even statewide, it's been a conversation that will be coming legislatively just because of the Esser Funds, and making sure that we could do that appropriately. So though, not just, there aren't, I don't think limitations just from the teacher contract. There might be provisions on how we go about things. There, the teacher contract does, I believe, reference our policy on recall and layoffs, if that situation were to arise. But like I said, we're trying to be as proactive as we can to see what we could do to minimize any of those actions that we need to take those.
Robin?
Yes, you took the word out of my mouth. We'll, we'll visit about then on Tuesday at GAC. And then I, I kind of, I never remember numbers, Doug, but I, for some reason, remember the, the teachers with master's degree. It went 64, 65, and now 63. I don't know.
Thank you.
I, I usually get numbers wrong, but for some reason, that sticks. So, pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, we remain right about in that percentage, so.
Nikki?
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. To you and your team for all you do. It's a very thorough report. David kind of beat me to the punch on the question about the master's degrees, because I wondered if the resignations and retirements played into that amount. My question now is, do we have a sense of how many of our teachers are currently working on a master's degree? Because I'm suspecting that more will be coming up through. Do we have a certain percentage at all that might be currently working, seeking that degree? Thank you.
I could get that information, because all year through the school year, we have transcripts, and we actually have two rounds where you can submit to a lane change, and the next one, I think, is coming in February. So I think it's there. I could get that information to see who'll be moving from bachelor's to master's, or within the master's in a certain credit threshold too. So I could get that information.
Okay, I'd be curious to see it. Thank you.
Doug, I wanted to ask a question regarding the employee wellness section. And I know that the, the program at the village is voluntary, and obviously, it would be confidential as well. Do we have an idea, though, how the program is being utilized?
Unfortunately, it's, and this is even the prior two years, because it is voluntary, and we try to put it at the end of the day where it doesn't conflict with classroom schedules and teaching. But particularly this year, it has been hard for staff to even voluntarily get into it, as we do manage through the absences. So it, it hasn't been as, as utilized as I would have liked it to be.
And is that an in-person opportunity, or are there virtual opportunities to participate?
We actually have all the sessions conducted via Zoom, to try to make it even easier for staff to just hop on a computer and get into that Zoom room, so.
Okay, so at a time when it's perhaps most crucial, it's difficult to participate, is what I'm hearing. Dr. Gandhi?
And I can't speak to this year, but I know that, I know you're probably referring to more of some of that voluntarily seeking out the opportunities that are offered in the village, and, and those numbers might be a little bit low. But last year, or the year before, we did, all of our campuses did provide some of that training, stress fatigue, and stress management, and emotional fatigue, I believe, onsite at each building through Teach to Learn. Principals had scheduled that as part of their staff meeting and professional development. Obviously, well, now we have some more limited time in, in the contracts. I'm not sure if that's happening for this year or not, but the last two years, that was a priority during COVID as well. And we had staff, more staff take advantage of that, because it was done as part of their building PD.
Thank you. Doug?
And that's a good point, Dr. Gandhi. It was offered as part of our January 17th PD, and that was very well attended. I actually had to expand the class sizes for people to be able to get into, so.
The challenge that it's ongoing, it's an ongoing need. Missy?
I think outside of the village, though, we have also provided for staff and students to connect remotely with Abound Counseling, I believe, is who we've contracted with for that. And then the other piece is in-house with our Restorative Justice facilitator. And through our Indian Ed program, we have provided Circles for Adults. And so that is the same thing we're doing with our classes for social-emotional learning, and I've been able to be a part of a couple of those. And I do believe that it is very helpful in a safe space to have someone facilitate meetings like that with our staff.
Great, thank you for that additional information. Any other questions? All right, let's continue on. Thank you so much, Doug, to you and your team. FEA report, Kim Belgard.
Yes, there we go. A lot of things been happening, and working hard, Dr. Gandhi and I. After going through the Esser All-for-One project, and getting all the information from him and collaborating, I did offer two sessions for FEA members to answer questions about participating and encouraging them to make the decision. FEA and the cabinet also reviewed our involuntary transfer policy, and we do look forward to that being followed and working out for our members. Bob and Missy and I met for a half-day, and we spent time on nine different topics, and really got a lot done. It was very productive. And we also set up additional meetings to work on advisory in the middle school, our counselors workload, and that they are adding three more to our elementary education, when to use our Schedule C for district committees. So that was really nice to lay that out. And then, of course, as you've heard before, the subs shortages of great concern, just for our staff and the safety of our schools. Dr. Gandhi and I spoke too about honoring our in-house substitute teachers that are hired staff. And I know another idea that Morehead is using. They give personal leave to their teachers that sub, whether it be an hour for an hour, or however, but that has been working out for them. FEA is also providing three different book studies for our members. We are doing the No Complaining Rule. It's always about the children, and kids deserve it. So that has been some good books and some good discussion. And lastly, the update on our MOUs. So the recess commission has completed, and the full report should be able to be reported out at the February board meeting. Our salary MOU, we've had four or five meetings under our belt. We've done studying of our past contracts. We've looked at our districts in the area, having really good conversations, and progressive work is happening. So that is nice to see. And our last one is bargaining. Rebecca and I have met and kind of put out dates that I wanted to get on your calendars to see if we could have the training next September, either the 23rd and 24th, or September 30th and October 1st. And our goal, of course, is that we would have all nine board members attend the training, and FEA would bring their nine negotiation members, and be ready to go with that. So look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. David, you have a question?
Kim, would you just repeat those dates?
Sure.
I didn't get them down quick enough.
September 23rd and 24th, or September 30th and October 1st?
Has there been any discussion about who will conduct the training?
I did contact NEA, so I've got that information to Rebecca. So I just want to kind of move forward, so we decide if we want to go that way, or if we have someone else in mind that we can get them on our calendar and that they can be prepared.
And David, we have some work to do on our end, on that regard as well. So, thanks for the question, David. And thank you, Kim. Have a great night. All right, Dr. Gandhi, the superintendent's report. And I did want to just offer up the opportunity for you, of course, if there's anything that was mentioned earlier during our public comment session that you feel like you need to address. Please feel free to add, add in there. I know that of the three individuals that talked to us, it, as far as I'm concerned, it, there are a couple themes there. Staff shortages, staff being stretched certainly is a theme, and also COVID mitigation. and, uh, also COVID mitigation procedures, uh, encouraging us to take a look at that again as a board and as a district. So, um, certainly if there's anything that you feel like you need to add in, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I'll start my superintendent student report today by first just talking briefly about the State of the Schools event that we've had since the last board meeting. Uh, just wanna first thank all the board members that were able to join us and participate uh, in that State of the Schools event. It was the first of a multi-tiered process to renew our strategic plan. We do follow a research-based process on how we go about renewing our strategic plan. So it's not gonna be the only avenue to collect input, but it was one avenue. And then, uh, department leads and instructional leaders will be able to take some of that feedback and then work through that and maybe massage, get more, uh, massage some of the ideas, see whether they work within our operations or not, maybe get more feedback from parents and other patrons if necessary. And our goal would be to provide a renewed strategic plan to the Board of Education when we do our annual renewal or annual update, uh, later this fall. So the fall of the 2022. So first off, just thank you to everyone. Also, I wanna acknowledge that over the last couple of years, whether it's because of COVID, whether it's because of weather, um, the attendance in-person continues to, to decline. We do continue to see high engagement from parents in other forms, whether it's directly with school leadership, which we appreciate, whether it's through contact via emails or other things on different, uh, or survey participations when we put those out as well. So I think both administration and the Communications Engagement and Advocacy Committee will probably have a, a serious conversation about the form in which we do that event. Uh, doing a large-scale production event, um, was probably important and the best way to go at one point in time, when that was a primary avenue of communication. Uh, it does take a lot of work and undertaking to put on an event of that size. But one of the things that I shared during my address was, we need to also adapt with the changes. And we are now part of a community and a culture where information is more readily accessible. Information can be provided more readily as well, whether it's through online surveys, whether it's through other means, and that was demonstrated as well. So we might have to just take a look at actual one large-scale event, if that's really the best way to go. Because, uh, the last couple of years with, when you take away staff members, the participation just hasn't been at maybe the numbers that would justify the amount of work and undertaking that is. So continue to be grateful for our IT staff, our South High School staff, Anne Marie and her team that, that worked tremendously to put that out and communicate through every opportunity possible about that event and in for the individuals that were able to join us. But there will also be other opportunities to provide feedback on different things should they need to do that. Couple of other things that I wanted to share today during my superintendent report, and I will probably take up a little bit more time today than usual, but just have a couple of things that I wanna share. First, uh, just a reminder to the board of the policy that you see on your screen, AP forty-two fifty. I know at the last board meeting, there was some concern shared about one of the texts that, uh, was shared at, uh, one of the high schools. There is some just information that's been already provided to the board to provide some clarity about a self-selected text. That was not a required reading for all students. They had an opportunity to select multiple texts. But also just that we do have a policy on instructional materials. Uh, sometimes what happens, uh, especially in recent times is that when there is a parent concern, though the parent that actually brought forth the concern with the student that's impacted may have worked out a resolution at the campus level, but then other individuals are bringing forth the concern as well. Uh, regardless of who is doing that, we will always encourage parents and the impacted students or families to work first with the building principal um, and to follow the policies and processes we have. That does not mean that we are not taking action. It just means that sometimes we're not gonna share the information of something that's already been resolved with another family. So that's a little bit of just a challenge that the district has when we combat some stories that get shared on social media, whether they're fully contextualized or they're not. Uh, the fact it might be that they've already been addressed and there, there's been a solution to work with the parent at hand, but that may not be shared with, with everyone else when that information is widely spread. So just another reminder that we do have this policy on instructional materials that is available publicly on the district's website. And then if there are concerns for any parents, community members, anyone, uh, regarding some of our materials, and I'm sorry if it gives you motion sickness, it's multiple pages. But towards the end of the policy, there is a request for reconsideration of educational materials. And we do follow this policy to a T and, and that's an opportunity that's there for parents as well. So, um, as we share information and as you, uh, communicate with patrons as well, um, I would encourage you to just make sure that we are following these policies and you give them the tools. Um, and now if there's something where we didn't follow our processes, please let us know because that's something that we will work on and improve and get rectified right away. But, uh, this is always gonna be our first avenue to do that. I do wanna talk briefly about substitutes. You heard today from several of our teachers, you've been hearing from me, that substitutes, um, continues to be a huge concern, not only in our district, but just nationwide and in our region as well. Uh, last week, we did have to close our early childhood special education program for a day because we did not have enough staff to be able to operate that program for that day. Um, we've had to look at, although it's not directly us, but work with Valley Bus in terms of not having enough drivers for all of our routes. And these are real problems that we have as well. We are gonna do everything possible, uh, that we can to address the issue. In fact, at this point in time, already we have several district office staff that are substituting twice a month, uh, in lieu of their, in their current position. But beginning February, all of the district office staff, including myself, that have a active teaching license, will be subbing at least once a month in classrooms, including Bob, Missy, and everyone else, and closing down what we're doing those days because it is a commitment from us to resolve the issue. I share the magnitude of the issue because I think that this is a community effort and we have to work together as well. I appreciate a lot of the conversations around advocating for increased compensation. As an educator, I will always advocate for increased compensation to the level that we can and sustain our district for all positions. Whether it's our nutrition service staff, whether it's our custodians, whether it's our subs, whether it's our teachers, everyone is working tremendously hard and deserve to be paid hard, and paid more and, and recognized for their efforts. But I also think that we need to work to make sure that our messaging is consistent and that we are accurately portraying to our community what is happening and what our challenges are. And, and I know that the intent is pure, but at this table alone, we've had multiple conversations comparing the role and position and compensation of a substitute teacher to other industries. And I think as most of you saw yesterday, that that was also reported widespread in the media, um, in the forum as one of the top articles. And unfortunately, what happens is that when we make inaccurate comparisons, it allows our community to create a false narrative. And in this situation, what that's done, it becomes damaging to the work that Doug and his team are doing to recruit staff. And it kind of undermines our efforts as well. And then I wanna share just a little bit of information specifically to what I'm talking about. And I am grateful for the forum because we have shared our concerns and they do wanna clarify some of the, the information that we provided to them. But what I'm gonna share with you today is just a brief analysis that, that I have done, um, regarding the substitute position. And we really wanna look at the first two columns here, which is, um, education for our daily substitutes. There's a difference between daily substitutes and substitutes that we hire long-term. And I'll talk a little bit about that. But I think what has been a natural tendency is that because education's a little bit of a different sector, uh, individuals don't necessarily understand or comprehend our daily rate as a hundred and twelve dollars the same way they would for, when they're trying to draw an inaccurate comparison to another industry that might be paying at an hourly rate. When you only look at those factors, you truly are misrepresenting, uh, what's happening with our substitutes because you're not accurately conveying the true compensation package. So what we currently pay in Fargo Public Schools for a daily substitute is a hundred and twelve dollars a day. In our substitute manual, we define that as working seven hours at the elementary school and that includes a planning period or five periods at the middle school or high school. And those periods could be forty-four minutes in length or forty-five minutes in length. When you compare that, oops, I apologize. When you actually compare that to another industry, and let's just say, because this is what was reported in the paper, seventeen dollars an hour, you have to take a look at other factors as well. So if you look at seventeen dollars an hour times seven, um, seven hours, that would give you kind of what that compensation would be, right? But in Fargo Public Schools, because subs are not, they don't sign a contract like another industry where your supervisor's gonna say, I need you here on this day and what you can do. Daily subs actually have the autonomy to set their own schedule because they can wake up in the morning and say, I wanna sub today, or I don't, or decide the night before and put them, they have the autonomy to determine the work location because they can pick which campus that they wanna take a sub job at. And they have defined hours, which we know that some businesses may or may not have that. But I'm just generalizing here for the sake of comparison. We have to incentivize for, after a certain amount of days worked because there really is no leave, um, or defined contract that they would have in comparison to someone at another industry or business. So what we do in Fargo Public Schools is we offer a hundred and thirty dollars after every twelve days worked. Those twelve days might be different for Rupak than it might be for Bob because I may choose to not work the next two days, but work the three days in a row after that. Bob might decide to do something different. That's where the autonomy of the schedule and the work location comes different. So when we try to draw those inaccurate comparisons, we have to take a look at all of these factors and put things in place, including the bonus that we offer for just a twelve-day job. Because in any other industry, no one really gets hired for less than twelve days of work. So that has to be part of the factor. So when you do actually just take a look at that for our, our daily subs and you weigh out all of these factors, not only is the compensation higher, total compensation after every twelve days, when you tease that out to a hundred and seventy-five days of work, you are higher than what you would be getting at a seventeen dollars an hour position, no matter what industry you're comparing it to. But in addition to that, you actually have the flexibility to decide when day, when you work, what days you work. There's no leave where you work, if, whether it's a school close to you or not. And you know you have defined hours, which may or may not be true depending on the business. So for a true comparison, what we should look at is a substitute position, which would be our long-term substitute position, that does not have the autonomy of scheduled days because we expect them to work a certain amount of time and not, doesn't have the autonomy of your work location because we expect them to be at the buildings where we need it for an accurate comparison. Those, they don't get a twelve-day bonus. They still have to work seven hours a day or five periods a day. And they, they don't have, uh, they do have defined hours because we know when they have to work. They get paid on our teacher's salary schedule, which as you will see, is significantly higher and is based on their experience. Um, you know, it's important for me to share this information because I think it's important for the way we message and we compare, or we don't compare it when situations where those aren't applicable. Because what happened yesterday inadvertently, and I don't think the intention was for that to happen, is that many members of our community could have read yesterday's article and say, why would I work for Fargo Public Schools as a substitute educator? Um, if there's other industries that can be offering a higher compensation. And the reality that, that's, that's just not true. When you actually look at the commitment of just twelve days of work, you're already coming out ahead. Plus, you have the ability to set your schedule. You have to select where you wanna go. And if you're willing to commit to us, no different than you would with an employer in a similar situation, you can be making upwards of forty-three thousand dollars. And, and those little nuances in messaging can really change and impact who applies for these positions. So, um, out of respect for the work that Doug and his team do continuously, day after day, I, I would just hope that we can continue to message that in an appropriate manner as well. So wanted to share a little bit about that with substitutes. And then I think, uh, Rebecca, you'd also asked us to briefly touch on some of the COVID mitigation strategies. And I know, um, I don't wanna do a disservice to representatives from Fargo Public Health or North Dakota Department of Health that have shared with us in the past. Um, we know that it, it, it doesn't seem appropriate for, um, while we see a surge, uh, to relax mitigation strategies if that's really the perception. But as Brenton and Dr. Newman and Desi Fleming have shared in the past, every decision they make and their guidance is based on, uh, making sure what they, the data that they're looking at, what's happening in schools, looking at the risk and the reward for every situation, and that's what their guidance is. There were some questions today about our interpretation of their guidance. We're in constant communication. Uh, they would tell us if, if we're wrongly interpreting their guidance. Actually, uh, this board meeting started at five-thirty. I think Blake and I were on the phone with Brenton at five o'clock about just getting updated guidance on how we implement things. So we are in constant communication with them as needed. Um, it is challenging because there's, obviously, it's a polarized issue. There's people that have different opinions, but we will continue until the board asks us otherwise to follow their recommendations, and that's what we're doing at this point in time.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Lots of information there. Anyone here have questions regarding the items he shared with us? David, go ahead.
I, I guess I have to take a little bit of exception to the, uh, to Dr. Gandhi talking about the inaccurate information. If, you know, just doing simple math, if you take seventeen dollars times seven hours working at McDonald's, for instance, you've got a hundred and nineteen dollars versus a hundred and twelve dollars as a substitute. Um, I'd be very disappointed if I pulled into a McDonald's and it was closed because they didn't have an employee, uh, and I didn't get my Egg McMuffin. I'd be much more disturbed if we didn't have a substitute teacher. I, I don't think that it's, it's necessarily fair to compare the two salaries just as apples are to apples. We desperately need more substitute teachers and we must do more. And I know everybody's trying. Nobody's ignoring the fact, but, uh, I don't think that, uh, we can sit here and say that the amount that we're offering as compensation is adequate. I, I don't believe it is because it's not being effective.
Dr. Gandhi?
David, thank you for your comments. We're on the same page. Um, we are gonna continue to work at this. So, uh, I, by no means that I mean to imply that it, that it's adequate, adequate. What I would want to imply is that, uh, when we draw the comparisons without looking at all of the working conditions, it sometimes disincentivizes someone to go to us versus going to another industry because it's just not the full context of the situation. That doesn't mean that at the same point, we can't and shouldn't be doing more. I started, uh, by saying that I continue to advocate for higher compensation for all of our staff, but including our subs. It is something that as a district, we're looking at doing. We're looking at it multiple ways. Earlier today, you had heard, um, the amount of staff that are taking on substitute positions. We are also looking at compensating our staff, our in-house subbing staff, even a higher rate than what we have been to taking on those positions along with the external staff that we've looked at. So we're talking about both the bonus structure. We're both talking about, uh, increasing the daily rate in general. Um, but that's also one of the reasons that we have gone from hiring, uh, zero a couple of years ago to thirty long-term subs. And we actually just upped that, uh, last week to forty. So now we're actually looking for eight more subs that we can pay at, at that, uh, teacher starting schedule of forty-three thousand dollars. So, uh, please don't take, uh, me saying we shouldn't draw the comparison to other industries to mean that, uh, we shouldn't do more because I always think that we should and this is something that we need to tackle. Uh, I just meant to say that let's not try to draw a comparison, and not just all of us, but even our community, uh, inaccurate comparisons that might disincentivize individuals because they don't have the full scope of the information.
Brian?
Just to add one more piece of information, um, starting February seventh, twenty-twenty-two, our, our, um, busing industry is gonna get tougher to get a license because you're gonna have to go through a lot more work to get that license, a lot more hours and things like that. This is a law that was passed in the federal government. But it was supposed to have started back in twenty-twenty-two, but with COVID, it's gotten delayed and so now it's delayed to twenty-twenty-two. So it's gonna be harder to find and get licenses for bus, busing as well. So, um, just know that.
Thank you. Well, I believe we should take a break. We've been here for a little bit, over an hour. So how about if we take a five-minute break and then we'll get to the consent agenda? Thank you. Is six forty-four PM? And we're on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Robin?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the HR addendum.
Is there a second? Second by Jim. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Consent agenda passes?
Sorry, I was trying to raise my hand before you asked for us all to say aye because I wanted to request that we moved a business item, just the financial reports. Um, you know, maybe even before the resolution conversation, uh, just to give Jackie a chance to, to review it and maybe highlight it. And it covers our ending fund balance and some of the other funds that highlights. And I know there was a couple of questions at last meeting, you know, regarding that. So I thought it would be appropriate to put it, uh, under our business.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second and, um, approval of the consent agenda. Any thoughts from board members? Jim?
Yeah, I would think we could certainly have Jackie share that information as we get into the discussion on the resolution, for sure.
I'm okay with that. Jennifer, okay? All right, good deal. Then we'll move on to business and we'll get into that. The first item is resolutions related to the issuance of limited tax school building, uh, building fund bonds, memo seventy-five. And Jim, would you like to introduce this as Planning Committee Chair?
Yes, thank you. Um, just- Um, just by way of background, under state statute, anytime a subdivision of government is going to issue out bonds, there is a process that has to be followed. This is step one in that process. Um, at our last board meeting, we authorized the administration to move forward with soliciting bids for two different projects, uh, the North High Track and Parking Lot Improvement and the Early Childhood Special Ed Addition onto the Hawthorne Building, uh, with a directive in that motion to bond for both projects. So the resolution in front of us uh this evening is to take step one of that process. Uh, it would authorize the administration to ultimately issue up to seventeen million in bonds. It could be less depending upon what bids come back and depending upon if we as a board approve the bids and move the projects forward. But we could not issue more than the seventeen million based upon this initial resolution. So with that as a background, just for discussion, I will make a motion uh that we approve the attached resolution and direct the business manager to publish the initial resolution for a limited tax school building fund bonds in the legal newspaper of the Fargo School District as per memo number seventy-five.
Is there a second? Brian?
Second.
Seconded by Brian? Okay, discussion? Jim?
Um, Jackie, I think i- if I understood your question correctly, Jennifer, could you maybe walk us through where we're sitting on fund balances in particular i- in the building fund? Um, and where this amount of debt falls into that picture um in terms of our fund balance and our ability to service that debt? I'm hoping that covered what you were looking for.
Um, I and I can, so I would um, I'm going to, I have to kind of keep both things going here at the same time then. Um, so our our building fund balance um, at the beginning of this year was about seven and a half million. And we were um projecting in that budget to be covering some of these projects that we are seeking bonding for, um, because at that time, we didn't anticipate the costs to uh have skyrocketed quite so much with that. Um, so in order to kind of preserve some of that fund balance, um, you know, went move forward here with this um request to issue bonds. Um, I guess I would ask if there are specific questions you're looking to have answered, Jennifer?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. Um, well, so yes, specifically looking, you know, at the document that was up in the consent agenda, is that the one you're looking at, Jackie?
Yep, I'm on the projects. On the accrued fund balance one.
Yep. And so specifically to really the ending fund balance as well as the, you know, building fund and the general fund here, we're looking at an overall ending fund balance of fifty-one uh million dollars.
That's just as of December thirty-first, okay? So that's um, there's still six months of uh revenue and expenses to come into those funds, um, and of course, we pay our biggest payroll out in June. Um, so those aren't the ending anticipated fund balances that we approved um when we did that. They will change.
So that's kind of what I was looking for really is to sort of give us, you know, because that's a big number, and we normally don't sit at an ending fund balance of fifty-one million. And so I was hoping you could just, if we're trying to say that, you know, we'd prefer to bond because our funding or because our building fund is only seven point five million.
You would have to approve then to issue uh to make these payments to cover these projects out of the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be a board decision in order to do that.
And so are you saying that with all the other expenditures you mentioned within the next six months, that that is going to be projected, or what is your projected ending fund balance?
Um, we are, we're hoping, um, so hang on, I have to go to a different report for that. We were hoping to um, right, break, break even, right, as a net gain of of zero this year. So then the general fund balance, assuming that would happen, is just under thirty-seven million dollars. That's where that would end up.
That's still higher than last year, correct?
Yes, we added to the to the fund balance last year. That that's the beginning, that was our ending fund balance. So it's it's where it would sit, assuming that revenues and expenses zero out in the year, it wouldn't have a change at the end of this year.
And percentage-wise, that is eighteen?
Oh, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Probably just under eighteen, probably inching up a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Discussion? Robin?
So if we were to use general fund dollars for buildings typically that would come out of operations, is there not a governance policy that we need to take that to the voters if we were to use general fund dollars? No?
Anne Marie can correct me if my, I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's a policy on that. However, I would have to bring a request and get board approval for a budget revision and for deficit spending.
Jim, go ahead.
Potentially.
I think what you're referencing is a board policy that if we wanted to issue bonds through the building authority, we would solicit a vote of the public for that.
Got it. Thank you.
But I would caution us to start using our general fund dollars for brick and mortar expenses. Um, I think we heard loud and clear from several different sectors just tonight that we need to be focused on being able to pay and get the quality staff that we need and to keep them. So using our general fund for brick and mortar is just going to make that even more difficult. Hence the reason I think it makes sense to bond while interest rates are still low um and save our current fund balance and capacity that the actual annual collection of property tax gives us for the future elementary school we're going to have to be building in the not-too-distant future, I suspect.
Brian, and then Jennifer.
If the expenses are a hundred and ninety million, the thirty-seven million, I just did the calculator real quick, it's nineteen point four percent is where we would be. And I think, Jim, when you first started your conversation, you said general fund, I think you meant building fund, so, but you clarified that at the end, so.
Jennifer?
Thank you. And I wasn't implying, I didn't mean to imply, to use it for brick and mortar. I just think it is a significant amount and we're questioned on it often. Um, why is it so high? And um nineteen percent is higher than we've typically had. I mean, it's within the range uh within our policies, but um, that's why I wanted to have the conversation around what is that going to look like at the end of the year? Have we dedicated those funds and to where? Are we being responsible with taxpayer dollars, or are we just beefing up our general fund while we take loans over here as well? Um, and you don't need to spend it on brick and mortar, but you can certainly give it back to the taxpayers, right? Instead of just continuing to inflate. So it was a conversation worth having, in my opinion. Thank you.
Dr. Gandhi, did you still have a comment?
Which with Jennifer clarifying that that wasn't the intent, um, I don't have a comment regarding that, but I do have a comment disregarding something uh that Jennifer just said too. It's, you know, I think sometimes when you just talk about holistic numbers out of context, like thirty-seven million dollars or nineteen percent, it might seem higher as well, but I would just remind um the board, and you know, we've talked about this in the past as well, and and uh Jackie and her team continuously get recognized by the Association of School Business Officials. There are guidelines and recommendations to be able to cover at least six months of operating costs, and nineteen million, nineteen percent or thirty-seven million dollars, we're not even there. Um, I think, you know, it might be higher than some other districts, but there's some things that we just have to do to just be good stewards of taxpayer dollars as well in order in order to ensure our own sustainability as an organization should we need that. And I don't know what the exact standards are, but I I know that we're not at at those months. I think I can pull it up from our previous finance report or standard of effort report if needed.
Thank you. Anything else before we vote? Anne Marie, go ahead. Paulson?
Yes.
Benson?
No.
Gullickson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is COVID-nineteen update. Is there anything that anyone would like to speak to at this point? Dr. Gandhi?
This, I think, um, just one of those times where we have a a second board meeting outside of uh, that doesn't overlap with the governance meeting in between. So with where we are in terms of mitigation strategies, I didn't uh ask Stephen Duroe to plan any additional information for me to share. Uh, I'm not, you know, we do now have a North Dakota Department of Health website where uh positive cases can also be looked at by student, by staff, by building, or even as a district as a whole. So uh, if the board wants additional information, they can, but I will be asking governance moving forward. Is this uh, then is there a need for this being a pending board item? So I'm happy to answer questions, look up information if needed, but there isn't anything for me to share at this time.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of our business uh portion. Moving on to board reports. Tracy, since you're on the phone, how about you go ahead?
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, just give me one second. Let's see, since we last met, can you guys hear me? Okay, sorry.
Yes, we're able to hear you just fine.
Okay, excellent. Um, we had DEA meeting, I attended a NDSBA lunch and learn uh regarding superintendent eval, which was very good. Um, I just wanted to highlight something that my liaison school, Discovery Middle School, is is doing this week. Um, they are showing a viewing of um, a documentary by the Fargo Police Department called Break the Silence. Um, and then that will be followed by a Q and A session with a panel of people from our community. Um, we all know that our community suffered two tragic losses um by suicide of two students in our community this past year, and this is really an effort to prevent further tragedies from happening. Um, so this invite is open to everyone in the community and in the public. It's this Thursday night at seven PM at the Discovery uh Auditorium, and I just encourage people to go. And then tomorrow, I am very excited to take part in the Career Day at North High School, where I'll be giving three different presentations. Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. Let's start with Nikki.
Well, I don't have a ton right at the moment, but um, we had uh communications engagement and advocacy back on January eighteenth. We've got governance coming up this week. Um, I believe it's next week. I'm in the negotiations through NDSBA out in Bismarck, the negotiations training that they are offering. Thanks.
Thank you, Nikki. Brian?
Um, my State of the Schools, um, I attended that along with Nikki did. Um, the MOU salary with Seth, um, that's been fun um to look at everything. Um, the other thing uh that I mentioned earlier about the busing, um, our drivers that have licenses, they're going to be grandfathered, so they don't have to go through that extra training, so that'll be good. And that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Robin?
Uh, on January thirteenth, I was invited to an exit interview for the FPS Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One um exit meeting for the audit. It was a clean audit. Um, so good job, Jackie and team. There were two auditors there, two FPS staff. Uh, there was a single audit, which is really a term for any any entity that uses more than uh seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of federal funds. And it took a little bit longer due to all the ESER funds and COVID funds, but we got it all worked out, and um, congratulations on the clean audit. Jackie, please pass that along. I know that the planning committee will be looking at that on Friday, I believe. Yep, so um, what a year, huh? Uh, that same day, I also went to the State of the Schools, so thank you for that presentation. We did receive a couple of emails thanking um this the district for for doing that. Uh, Nikki, you need to be at Governmental Affairs Committee next week too. Uh, Tuesday, February first, and we're going to talk about some interim work. And then I have two awards I want to talk about, so I'm going to embarrass Brian right now. He was at the um, where Rupak was, the North Dakota can uh, uh, educational leaders.
School administrators.
Okay, school administrators. And Brian is a superintendent, and I came across a picture on Facebook today where he was a, he was awarded a little plaque, and of course, he's too modest to say, but he received a certificate for twenty-five years of being a superintendent?
Yes.
So congratulations, Brian. Yeah. And then I was also handed um, a beautiful little statue uh by our resource officer down down at the end of the table here. So this was a surprise, so I'm not prepared to talk about it, but to to Tracy's point, the Break the Silence videos were made by our community policing department. And um, I've already talked about this on the on in media a little bit. This is a fundraising arm that um, it through the badges of unity Fargo Police Department, and I I am have the honor to chair that nonprofit committee. And so, sorry, I'm a little bit um short on words because this is a surprise, but from Dakota Medical Foundation, the Giving Heart Award of twenty-twenty-one is in recognition of the Fargo Police Department. Giving hearts leads an exemplary service and giving to others for breaking the silence around youth suicide and a role modeling for the courageous communication it takes to save lives. And it was awarded yesterday. So thank you, Kristy and your team. Um, several, well, it was mostly high school students that were part of that um, that video that was incredible. There is a large video, and I think there are five smaller vignettes that are shared on social media. So really proud to to contribute to that effort, and thank you for your community community policing efforts, Kristy Jacobson, as well as uh, I've I've talked about the new chief, how how much eff- effort he's putting behind those community policing efforts. So thank you. Uh, I I get the good stuff, I don't do all the work, uh Kristy and her team do, but this is the beautiful, the beautiful statue, and I'll hand it back to Kristy because I'm guessing she'll want to put it back at the police department. Thank you for all your work.
Jim, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, planning is going to meet this Friday, seven-thirty, right here for those unplanning or those that have nothing better to do Friday morning. Um, since our last board meeting, the SEC Board went through the Cognia Advanced Ed Interview Process uh as the organization is up on its five-year review cycle this year. So that process got completed, and I suspect we'll get the findings and report sometime in the next couple of months, and I can give you an update when those happen. And just one thing for your edification, Brian. Our partner in transportation, Valley Bus, is actually the DOT Certified CDL Instruction people as well. So they get to train the future drivers, gives us kind of a leg up, to say the least.
Good.
Thank you, Jim. David?
Uh, planning on Friday, and I think that's all I've got right now.
Question, there is a letter that I passed around, did it get to the end? Right, I would like to make sure that Seth and Jennifer and David have a chance to see that too, so thank you. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. I attended the State of the Schools event as well, and um, I thought it was is very healthy uh goo- and good discussion uh by both the administrators that were in the room and district staff and parents, and there was a lot of good ideas shared um amongst the group, a lot of great things also that are happening. Um, I would say that the one, the topics that rose to the top clearly were mental health um conversation and some of the challenges that certainly our our kids are facing today and um, um, how the events of the last few years have contributed and what can we do moving forward um to sort of to to help that or to address it. And really, I feel like um, the major or one of the major takeaways is there is, and there has been for some time, a significant need, right, to um, to increase our level of uh partnership between the school district and mental health um, um, offerings. And and I know that that was a huge push in the last session as well in terms of not reinventing or duplicating services, but rather uh the funding silos that occur in terms of mental health, how can we partner differently or better moving forward? And so I really was excited to hear about the pilot that's happening at uh Fargo North High uh with that partnership and and fostering that. I think that that is a a step in the right direction, absolutely. Um, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight that and say congratulations on moving that forward. Um, there was also great ideas, and I hope that someone was taking uh notes in terms of whoever was the recorder in the room around.
in terms of whoever was the recorder in the room around an app for FPS. And parents just had all sorts of ideas in terms of how, because there is a lot of information pushed out, right? There's newsletters, there's a website. And, and for some parents, especially we had a few new Americans in our group, and I thought it was really great to hear from them and the challenges that they have daily in terms of not knowing where to go find the information, even if it is out there. And so, so I thought it was great. I mean, matter of fact, it, I think the group maybe concurred because we were there till nine o'clock. So we visited much longer than the intended time and the vast majority of us were there that long. So, so I think it was good, although smaller than other years. I do think it was still a valuable experience for all that were, that all that could participate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Seth?
See, given that I was absent for the last meeting, we've had since the last time I was here, we've had two meetings of the Salary Commission on the 5th and on the 19th of this month. And next meeting will be on the 2nd of next month. I think things are going pretty well. We're having really, like Kim said, we're having some really good discussions and looking at some history and, and, and future. And I, I foresee that we'll be producing a useful report in May when we wrap up. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. I have the draft of the MOU Recession Commission Report. I, I suppose Nikki, you have that too, I would imagine. So I'll take a look at that and it, it should be ready for us to bring to a meeting, I think, early February. Governance meets Thursday and it's a little bit of a longer agenda than sometimes. So just letting those of you that serve on that committee, just, you know, allow a little time to make sure that we get through the agenda. Focus group experience was very positive, even though, again, the numbers were lower. I just think it's always valuable when groups of people get together and talk in a circle and, and knowing that there were differing viewpoints amongst many of us, I would say, in some areas very strong, we were able to have really nice dialogue. And that is, that's so beneficial. And so sometimes just being able to sit in a circle and meeting face to face, barriers get broken down and, and we realize that we have a lot of commonality. And it's sometimes just like the way that we get to a solution is, you know, oftentimes a little bit more challenging, but many times we can agree on some of the main, main points. And mental health really was the focus of, of that group. And I was in that group with Jennifer. So thanks to everyone participating and looking for new ways to grow that initiative. I, I attended the CEA meeting, January 18th. The school talk and the journey issues have an article that I wrote through governance that was out January 20th. And I basically thanked people for participating in that State of the Schools Public Focus Group event and taking the time to do so. And I believe that that is the end of the report right now. Our next meeting is the, is February 8th at 5:30. So we'll see everyone then. We're adjourned, it's 10 after 7:00. Thank you.